I'd like to call tonight's city council meeting to order for Monday, August 27, 2018. Can I have the real call vote, please?
Mayor Viera is absent. Councilmember De Rosset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Klein.
Here. If I could, please have you stand. First, we're gonna have invocation by Lauren Gregory, Victory Assembly of God, and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we once again come before you and just ask for your wisdom and your grace and your mercy, Lord, as we handle the people's business. Just guide us and help us to be of one heart and one mind. We ask these things, Lord, in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we have no presentations tonight. Citizens' communications to the city council on matters that are not posted on the agenda, okay? While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Well, I have some speaker cards in front of me, so if you could, please, I'd like to go through these first. The first one is Lee Brant.
Good evening, council. Happy birthday, Ken.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I just want to thank the council for the radar sign that they put out because last time I was complaining about the speeding down Heli Aloha and Myrtlewood and down Acorn. And the speed sign has helped slow traffic in front of my house, which is awesome. However, once I get past that sign, because I walk every day, I get past that sign, as soon as people get past the sign, they speed up. It's amazing, you know? So, eh, whatever. And then there are a few people that try to see how fast they can register on that sign from central to where the sign is. Seen a guy the other day, he actually made fifty-two miles an hour, you know? But anyway, you know, I thank you for that, you know? It works, but if you can move it, that's fine, you know? Put it down on Acorn. Acorn, the, the speed limit, it just, it just hasn't changed, you know? And I, I know that there was a joint effort, you know? And I'm sure that just kind of freaked all kinds of people out, but it just didn't, I don't know what to do, you know? It's up to you guys, you know? I support all these guys in the back, back here, you know? We need to do something about the traffic, the crime unit, you know, and, and all that stuff. But I want to, and also, I'd like to address the, the traffic situation at the corner because I, that's the only corner I go to, is the corner of Acorn and Moffett. And the cars back up there to go to May Hensley, they back up all the way up to Caswell, back almost to Ken's house. I don't know, can there be a crossing guard put there? You know, who would put them up? You know, who would pay for that? With the school district, with the city, or whatever? Because see, what's happening is these kids, they walk, and they're walking ten-foot, you know, ten-foot between each other, and once they hit the street, they just keep going. They don't stop, they don't hesitate, they don't try to let the car on the right or left or anybody go. So, that, and hence, that's why the, the traffic's getting all backed up. Somebody needs to stand, stand there and say, "Okay, you guys gotta wait," you know? And you get twenty kids or whatever, then you let them go. But it's a continuous stream of kids, you know, going. Uh, let's see. And that's about it. You guys, you know, like I said, thanks again for the sign, and I support all these guys back here, and let's see if we can get some more.
Thank you. Councilman Lane?
Yeah, Lee, thank you for the comments, and, you know, I just want to say, you know, it's really difficult to, to teach stupid sometimes, right? Honestly, and, you know, I know we've dealt with the Series Unified School District and crosswalks in the past, and if they put a guard out there, unfortunately, it creates a liability, if you will, for the school district. So, anyway, we have, have seen that in the past, and certainly, I'd like to see a lot more of that and to move traffic through a lot quicker, but unfortunately, it's the world we live in with all the regs here in California.
Okay, the next speaker I, card I have is Eric Domene. Can you please say your name, please?
Yes, my name is Eric Domene, and I live here on Murillo Drive by East Gate, behind Walmart. I got a couple things that I'd like to talk about is, in that area, in a new complex by East Gate area, a lot of cars are parking right up to the stop sign. Okay, that's one. Another thing, there's dogs, when the people walk their dog, they don't have them on leash. And then I was walking around the neighborhood, and then this guy opened his garage, and two dogs came at me, and then the dog, it didn't bite me, but it sure went and ran me because I could have hurt the dog, or the dog would have hurt me. So, what the problem is, I, I called non-emergency, and I told him, and then the guy said, "You gotta go Crow's Landing and make a report." Hey, how in the world I go and walk to Crow's Landing? And, and another thing, you know, I gotta retire before I can come to one of these meetings because most of the guys living in the area, they're all working. You know, people coming to these meetings, they cannot be here certain time. So, this was my complaint about the people who, in that area, they don't have fence around their yard, they, they walk their big dogs, and then they, the dog just, you know, they're not picking up the, you know, the dogs when the dogs use the bathroom. So, another thing too, the cars are speeding on East Gate, they, they speed around, they're coming down East Gate, they're coming around eleven or something, and then they make the turn, they go, we can find them because I ride my bike, and I can, I can locate them guys, I, I talked to a couple of them. But they get speeding like everything. And then we got panhandlers at Walmart, and then the panhandlers, they standing over there at Walmart by Hatchet, and then, you know, they, they over there asking for money and stuff, which is okay, I mean, you know, maybe that's what they like do. And then they got panhandlers the other night by a gas station, Arco. These guys standing there about eleven at night, opening the door for people, and he not working for the gas station. So, what if the, walk up there, and he open the door and bang somebody in the head? So, I called non-emergency. Non-emergency told me, "You cannot do nothing, you gotta call, the store owner gotta call." The people, they Indians, also, the Indians own all the gas station, they're not gonna call the police because they gonna call their own, you know, people for take care of business. So, the party, I said, "What about me? I'm a customer." He said, "Well, if the people don't call, then it's all right." But I told him, you know, people panhandling, get the guy on a bridge over there when you come up by, as you come in ninety-nine, and you go up the bridge, get Hatch Road Turning, there's the guys over there panhandling. So, we know panhandlers, they organized, you know? I see them, they, they, they go around, the, the panhandling, then they move because they can do so much. And, and then, we got the people who dumpster dive, they coming into our neighborhood, what everybody working in that area by East Gate, Murillo, you know, all there. So, I called, I called the police, the police said, "Okay, we'll send somebody out." So, the police comes out, and then you just tell the guys, "Full move." You don't even ask them the information, like what you, what you, you know, what's your license or something? Why you coming over here dumpster diving in a neighborhood? And mostly, everybody going work, nobody home at that time. So, that's behind Walmart area, you know, not the old neighborhood, but the new one. The guys walking there, they, they dumpster dive. So, the police come, and the police just tell them, "You gotta move on." So, they move on. But then they back again. There's, there's another one, and then, what you call, on Mitchell Road, right here, Mitchell Road, ninety-nine, when you, when you going towards south, that's, that's too short, you know, like when you get on from off Mitchell? When you going that way, it's too short because the big trucks, it run you off, a lot of people getting run off on that area. So, I know I touching on a lot of stuff, I give five minutes, but I think it's important. And then, yeah, we got the dumpster divers, and then the, the part I, I couldn't understand why the dispatch, a non-emergency, because you call nine-one-one, they're not gonna come out. You, you gotta call non-emergency and tell them guys, and them guys would say, "Okay, we're gonna take care of that." Another thing about dogs not on a leash, you gotta go wait on Crow's Landing and make a report. So, of course, you know, I don't like hurt the dogs, or the dog would hurt me. Couple times, I be riding my bike around, you know, we're Rite Aid or Walmart, and then I go in the neighborhood because I looking, because I'm a, you know, I acting like a tourist. I'm from Hawaii, I like look at the little cars because we, we interested in old cars, hot rods. They called the police. So, not too long, I riding my bike or my little, you know, my scooter, because I, I retired now. Next thing you know, the police come, "What are you doing?" I said, "I riding my bike, I looking around. When you guys come to Hawaii, you guys look around."
Okay.
You know, I give five minutes. Okay, yeah, I take the five minutes, but he come, he tell me, "This California." I said, "This from, this United States."
If I could get you to finish up, because you're, you know, your five minutes, and I have a few more cards to go?
Yeah. That's all I can say. One last one I like says, I used to get one studio right here, right across Series Jug Store, I got robbed, and then take the police, two hours, two hours for me to, the police to come over here and come check me out, two hours. So, you know, you, you was like, take me a long time for coming at this meeting because I had, nobody can come to this meeting right now because most of the, all the guys who live here, they working.
Okay.
So, thank you for your time and listening to me, and I hope somebody can do something about these guys who panhandling, because they making traffic problems.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Well, first off, let me, let me address one thing, panhandling?
Yeah.
I know if you go into the business and you say something to them, it's their responsibility to take care of the panhandlers or to notify that's there. We're contracted by Stanislaus County for, for, for animal control, okay? Yeah. So, I'm gonna ask Mr. Wells, if you can, just find out when animal control comes in here or, or what the process is for animal control as far as patrolling our city?
We are partners with six other cities in the joint effort, with a joint powers agreement for the Stanislaus Animal Services Agency. So, the Stanislaus Animal Service is a separate agency which we contract to provide animal services. There are offices located on Crow's Landing, so any with an animal issue of that nature can report that to the city or to animal services, and they'll take report and follow up on those as necessary. So, that is the process for doing that.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker I, card I have is Peggy Cole.
Good evening. This is my first time doing this, so give me a break, okay? I'm here, I'm a resident of Series. My name is Peggy Cole, and I walk around, I have a morning walk that I do, three and a half miles every morning, and I have noticed that most people don't stop at stop signs in Series. And I have noticed several other things, I've almost been hit by cars running stop signs in Series. And I've listened to all the previous complaints that you've had here this evening, and I think that really what you need to seriously do is you need to hire more police officers and give them a raise.
Thank you. Next speaker card, Mary Atkins.
Mary Atkins, and I lived in Series for almost forty years, and I am ashamed of all of you for not giving our police officers a raise since...
Okay, okay. Can we please hold your applause?
It's been ten years, I know, and a lot of your police officers have left for that same issue. So, they, they're here to defend and protect all of us, including all of you. So, you're ashamed, 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 all of you.
The last speaker card I have is Connie Vasquez.
Hi, as you know, I'm Connie Vasquez. I have a business here in Series, and I live over on Forest Lane. I have a daycare, a lot of small children, and I'm really concerned that we only have three officers each shift for this whole community. I went to Walmart this morning, I watched a gentleman walk a bike out of the store, and it was stolen. I watched him do it, they can't do anything about it except call the police, but there are no police to help. It's really sad, and this is what these small children are growing up into. What can we do about that? How can we keep our, our fine police officers? Every one of these guys probably have looked for a job outside of Series because they're not getting the raises that they deserve, and we need them to stay here. They're good people, we need them to stay here. What can we do about that? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
I apologize for not bringing my card in advance. My name is Martin Lemus. I've been a resident of Series for ten years. I was born and raised in Modesto. I left Modesto for a reason, my whole family did, my mom and my sister, and along with her, her children. We left Modesto for a reason, a lot of it had to do with public safety. And, and what I mean by that is that Modesto, I don't, I didn't want to raise my kids there, and so thankfully, I, I raised them here in Modesto. I have three beautiful young children, and, and my wife and my sister has her four, four children, my mother, and so on and so forth. One of the biggest things for me is that, it hurts to say, but I've recently contemplated and really thought about leaving Series, and the biggest reason why is because of the lack of police officers, of the presence of police officers in the city. I've, I've called the police department on several occasions for non-emergency issues, and I've been extremely happy with their service. They've been there, I mean, they've been Johnny-on-the-spot, they've been there quickly and efficiently, and, and so I'm very grateful for that. But at the same time, and some of the things that I've read with, with the shift, like the lady mentioned before, to have three or four officers for our entire community, I think is extremely negligent, not on the police department's side, but because of all of the ladies and gentlemen sitting before me. I think that one of the biggest reason is because we are not competitive with how we're paying our police officers here in our community. We expect them to do a crazy job that nobody else in the room would probably do, but we want to pay them the most, the least possible amount of money possible, and that doesn't make sense to me. Again, I'm happy with, with, with the city, I've been happy for the last ten years, but now sadly, I'm starting to contemplate on leaving for the same reasons why I left Modesto. And Modesto, if you call the police department, and I can tell you firsthand, you're gonna wait, probably four to six hours if it's non-emergency. I don't want, I don't want to see my police department do the same thing because you are forcing them to do the same thing when they're understaffed, when they're underpaid. Not that we don't have educated, hard-working officers in city, in the city of Series, but that's what we're starting to attract. I feel that if we're gonna attract a very low compensation rate, we're gonna attract individuals who are at the bottom of the barrel, scraping from the different academies, and we're not gonna get the quality of officers that we currently have, all because they're going to cities that are paying them a little bit more. The other thing is that when we force these officers to go out there and work double-shift and work on overtime basis constantly, we're, we're asking them to, to, to put their officer's safety at risk, there's so many other things that come with all the level of exhaustion, the long hours that they're working, it just concerns me. Them as human beings, they're missing out on their family reunions already, law enforcement is a difficult job, I understand that, but when they're working double shifts and forced to cover for other officers, they're, they're working that much, and we're expecting them to give so much more than the one that, than they should really be doing. So, just in closing, please remember that us, the citizens of Modesto, are your bosses, and if you guys don't take care of the things that we are, that are, that we here hold dear to our hearts, then election time will come, and we will make a stance, and we will make sure that you, if you're not serving our, our needs and our, our claims for the different things and the resources that we want, we will remember that in Election Day. Thank you.
Do I have anybody else who would like to address the council on non-agenda item? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Albert Pointez, this is my wife Rosa Linda. I'm here to talk about the notice and information that just went out about the lunch truck. What would it be called?
Catering truck.
Catering trucks, taco trucks, that the city's considering about allowing into the city, and, real quick, I'm, like, not for it. I don't think the city of Series, I, I love Series, I lived here fifteen years, and, you know, I drive through Modesto, there's all kinds of lunch trucks all over place. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with lunch trucks, I just don't want to see them all over Series, you know? And some of the key things I have here saying is, you know, I don't think it's gonna, according to the article I saw on Facebook, it's not gonna benefit any of the businesses around here as they think. No controlling of illegal setups at night, because some of these lunch trucks are aggressive, they set up on properties out of nowhere.
Well, we have the patrol officers available to, you know, look out for these, you know, improperly trucks that are out there or picnicking out there. What else is it going to attract? We already have the homeless in the city of Series more and more. We have them going through our garbage cans, I'm constantly calling the police department. Now, many times...
And they do a fine job.
Yeah, they've, they've actually come immediately, they've come almost immediately to every response that I've had, had to make a call for. But as far as the homeless situation, that's getting worse, and now the dispatcher's not even bothering to send out these patrol officers, so I'm not too sure what that, what's going on with that. But there is an issue, we're just, we're concerned. We've already got to this coming into the city of Series, the homeless. What is this going to attract, these trucks? We are not for these taco trucks. That's for Los Angeles, downtown LA maybe, not for Series.
So, if I, if I may make a comment, what we did was we had a, we had a study session, we didn't make a decision, we gave staff direction, okay? And the discussion was to allow, you know, a food vendor truck for special events, like we have a local brewery called Blaker Forty, okay? Laker Brewing, they do specials on Friday and Saturday night, so allowing them to bring in a, a food vendor for their special event. We have River Oaks Golf Course for any kind of special event, whether it's a golf tournament going on or whatever, allowing them to do that, where we, where we monitor it. The idea was, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Westbrook, but to, they would have to come to us to get a business license and a sticker. They're only, right now, we're setting it up on a trial basis, and we haven't really brought it to the council for a decision, but the discussion was a trial basis for, like, six months where they have to get a sticker, so if, if code enforcement or patrol officers or anything that goes by can see this sticker that they're allowed in the city, okay? And if they don't have that, they're not allowed in the city. We were talking about limiting them, what we, where we can, where we can put them. As far as thing, we talked about hours of operation, you know? Because I had the same concern as you did with hours of operation, you know? You have industrial areas that, you know, businesses close at six, seven o'clock at night, so we don't want them out there at six or seven o'clock at night. So, we, the city council, the staff, we had that discussion. We do not have an ordinance where we're allowing them in the city currently, okay? This was all a informal discussion amongst us with the city staff and people that were present, to give staff direction of how to proceed and come back to us with something formal as far as we will want to do. And if you'd like to be informed on that, please write your name, email address, and give it to the city clerk, and when it comes back, we'll be glad to notify you so you can come in and read, read the stuff that's brought before us.
Yes.
Because we did have the same concerns.
Yes. And I, I don't have any challenges with, you know, you know, park organizations or, you know, the Modesto, they have the truck fairs, the food, the food courts and all, I don't have a challenge with that, you know, when the trucks are organized for an event, but when they're just loosely set up, and that was my main concern, most likely premature right now, but I just needed to make, you know, an opinion on that, just want to address it, that, you know, during the food court sessions or during the, the events, you know, like mod stock or something, you know, food courts, yeah, you have the trucks there, but not just, you know, on the corner of my gas station down the street from my house, just set up, because that attracts, you know, unwanted.
Right, and that, and that's one of the discussions we had had, we had had, that, you know, we'd allow it in some kind of industrial areas, but, you know, because I brought up, like, Smyrna Park, because of the picnic table, okay? It will not be allowed to set up anywhere like that by the schools, different things like that. So, basically, it was, it was a discussion, and it was a discussion that we had with staff to put it together. So, when it, when it comes back to us again, you know, please, your name, phone number, email address, or whatever, if you can write it down and give it to the city clerk, when it comes back before, you know, we will gladly notify you so you can, you can attend the meeting, and you can get, be a part of the discussion.
Yes, we want to just see Series remain clean. We are the highest taxpayers, Series. I know that, we do, we pay high taxes, so we appreciate you listening to us and taking our opinions into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Good afternoon, Don Donaldson. I've lived in Series since seventy-two, and first of all, your flag is that it needs to be at half-staff for one of our fine gentlemen that was in the military. We need to honor the people that served our country, and whenever one of them passes away and it's down to half-staff, I, I think it should be down there. I was in the military in seventy-three, sixty-three, time flies, and, and boot camp, we used to spread out like these little kids do in, at the crosswalks. We'd see an officer about four or five blocks away, and we'd all spread out, make him salute to each one of us, honorary little devils. But then he stopped us and got us all together, and we had to stand at attention for an hour. Punishment pays off, punishment pays off. I was on a minesweeper. Our ship went eight miles an hour, so Hawaii is twenty-four hundred miles, so fourteen days it took us to get there. It's about the time that it takes you guys to decide that we need help protecting our city. Now, really, we, we voted for a half-cent sales tax to protect the city. We don't care if it takes forty police officers, it's up to you to find a way to protect the city. It's up to the military to find a way to protect the United States. That's what we pay you for. We pay you to make decisions to protect, I don't care if it's fire, I don't care if it's police, we need to be protected. Raise my taxes, do whatever you can so we can be protected. I want to go to sleep at night knowing that I have people to protect me whenever I'm asleep. That's what I want. Raise my taxes, do whatever you want. Well, no, I'm a hypocrite, because all I have to do is take the papers down to Stanislaus County, and all my taxes are free, because I'm a hundred percent disabled veteran. Now, wouldn't I be a hypocrite to stand up here and tell you to raise my taxes when I don't have to pay them? I have to pay the half percent sales tax, raise it up to three percent if that's what it takes to protect the people. We've got too many people, gang members and everything else, out on the street. I'm even afraid now to leave my car unlocked and, and, and go out there at nighttime. It's not right. Whenever you retire, you need the right to go around the block, walking every morning without being, with, with gangs and stuff. I, you know what, hey, I, I really do, I, I think we really need to look into this and find a way, if we have to raise, and now we have Oversight Committee on that half percent to where to spend it on where we voted for it. I can remember voting for that over in the other building, over there, when it was over there. I'm for the police, and I'm for the fire, two and a half minutes for somebody that's have a heart attack, that, that's life and death. That's life and death. If it takes longer than that, you're, you're most likely... If it takes longer than that, you're, you're, most likely, you're, you're on your way. So let's, let's get this police and, uh, firemen up to where it belongs and protect the people of Series. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
Good evening. My name is Renee Gaskell. I was here a couple of months ago for the fire department, so I'm back again for the police department. Equal, equal share here. Um, you know, much like our schools, um, we can't keep good teachers. The parents are the ones that really feel it the most. Our kids feel it, uh, as well. Um, you can't have a good school without good teachers. You can't have a good city without good police and fire. Uh, you guys talked about hiring, um, a few, uh, fire department people and filling in some of the positions for the police department. We can only fill if we're, we gotta fill, but we gotta fill and, and keep. We can't keep, you know, it's not catch and release here. We gotta retain too. We all want to make more money. Things cost more and it costs more to live in Series. We pay more in sales tax. And like the gentleman said, you know, I don't mind paying it if I know that when I call the police, they're gonna come. And they're gonna come, but you know, when you're spread thin, you can only do so much. And I've been working overtime for six months at my job and I feel like I've just dropped every single ball at work for the last six months. Even though you're trying to hold it all together, what are they dropping? That's what I'd like to know. What are they dropping? And it's not because they are negligent, it's because they can only do so much. And you guys also have been talking about hiring and looking into it. I know you guys were talking about negotiations. Where do you guys stand with that? Why are we not at a point where you guys are ready to say we can give some kind of a raise to these departments? That's what I'd like to know. As a second point, 1.2 million still kills me on the parks, but the kids are loving it. Um, dogs are everywhere. It's wonderful. Um, but the drains are already plugged and I'd like to know what kind of, um, maintenance you guys are gonna have on that, how often they're gonna be checking that because, um, the parks are being heavily used. It would be great if we could get lighting later because so many of us don't have a day schedule. Um, and it's nice to be able to go when we can, um, and sometimes avoid the other dogs, that kind of thing. And in reference to traffic stopping, I was at the park on Saturday and I counted twenty-five cars that did not stop. And I'm not talking a rolling stop, I'm talking just a slow down and keep on going. And that's a really busy intersection with so many kids there. Um, I know you guys all care about Series. Most of you live in Series. Well, actually the council members do. Um, you know, so it's, it's all of our cities. I've been a citizen for, of forty-two years here. Um, I love it. Convinced my husband to come back, um, to this area. It's a great city. We've got to figure out how to keep ourselves that great city that people say, oh, you're from Series? How do you like it? It's awesome. You have five minutes to the freeway. It's a great little town. Let's keep it that way. And we do that by keeping good firemen and good police. And I know that you guys want it too because you live here as well. We've just got to figure out and make a way to make it happen. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council?
Jean Yackely Series. Sitting here and listening to all these people tonight, which you guys have been here a long time. Look at all the people that showed up. They usually don't show up like this. There's a reason why and we all know what that reason is. And might be against protocol for what's supposed to be done at a city council meeting, but I think now that we got Toby Wells here, we got Chief Smith here, without a bunch of questions from the audience, it'd be nice if they could answer from what they've heard already to tell these people something. And what it basically turns out to be, and we all know that we've come to these things enough time, it's all about revenue. And with no money, you can't make raises, you can't make more people come online, but these people want an answer tonight. And just for them to go home and not get some kind of input from these people up here. And like I said, Toby Wells, he pays the bills more or less. And Chief Smith, he's in charge of the police department. What two people better do we have right now? No questions from the audience, but what you've heard tonight already to explain to these people that's taken the time to come here tonight to get some kind of clarification. That's all.
Vice Mayor. I'm a big fan of the fire department, not so much of the police department. But anyway, I have a question. When we have three officers on duty and anything happens, they all three go to the same place. That means the sheriff's department is watching the town, right? Right?
Chief, Chief Smith?
Correct.
Well, if the sheriff's department is watching the town and they're being paid, why? Why can't that money be used to put enough police in Series? We don't have to have cooperation with the sheriff's department. It, it seems like you guys kind of got a problem.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? No?
Yes, I live right here on Fourth Street and Ten. And my car, the guy was stealing my car, right? And I was watching him. So I called the police. They, they sent out one, one service department guy.
Okay.
He, how can he catch the crook? Right? So anyways, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council on non-agenda item? All right, I see nobody. So we're gonna move on. There's no appointments to the board or commissions. Would anybody on the council like to, uh, have a conflict of interest declaration? I see nobody's got a conflict consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or a public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anybody on this council that would like a consent item or, uh, pulled for further discussion? I see none. Is there anybody in the audience who would like one of the consent items pulled for further discussion? I see, pardon me?
Five.
Five? Okay, with that, I'll bring everything, I'll bring it back for the city council.
Yes, Vice Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of one, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Dorosset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero, one.
Okay, the person that, that pulled item number five, will you please come forward
I can't see Jeremy, so I don't know and I don't really want to talk behind his back. But my next-door neighbor, there's only one person, and she was in Oregon for three weeks and her water bill went up thirty dollars. Mine went up and I'm only irrigating on, our water, on, on, on Monday or, or Wednesday in the morning, not at evening anymore. Not, not, not watering at all at nighttime, just in the morning. My bill went up fifty bucks. The neighbor on the right, theirs went up forty dollars and they're only irrigating every morning. What, what is this? That you just push a button and say, hey, everybody's water bill's going up? Fifteen, twenty thousand people in, in, in Series, that's a lot of money. That's, that's a lot of money. That'd pay a lot of police and firemen. Just push the button and say, okay, everybody owes twenty-five, thirty dollars more. Is that how it works? I'm gonna get a new meter and I'm gonna put my own meter on my house. Because I just don't believe it. I, I just cannot believe that your water bill goes up that much whenever you reduce watering. And the person right next to me was in Oregon for three weeks and her water bill went up. How does this happen? How does it happen?
Mr. Lane?
This time of year, as you know, we get twenty-seven thousand gallons per, per month. You know that, right?
I know that.
And you're signed up for the portal and all that, I'm sure, right, Don?
Right.
Well, you know, we had a two-eighteen vote also, right?
Well, how does somebody's bill go up?
What was the two-eighteen vote for, Don?
I'm sorry?
We had a two-eighteen vote that took place recently. What was that for?
To raise for our water coming from up there at, uh-
That, that's-
Turlock, I guess, at Turlock and, and put new-
Out, out of the Twaloma River, we're talking about, um, our water treatment plant, surface water treatment, if you will.
Yes, yes. Up on the other side of Gear Road.
And so there's a rate increase. I don't know why there's a difference, right? But mine went up too. I'm paying a hundred and sixty dollars, I think, a month now or some, something like that, that I look at and I go, oh my gosh, we voted for that? Yeah, we did. Because you know why we voted for that? Because-
Good water.
Right. It's because, you know what? They sometimes say that water's worth more than gold.
I know.
Right? Well, that's, that's why. And why bills are different may depend on what the usage is, Don.
I know, but-
Okay.
I use less water. I only-
But you're still charged a minimum of the twenty-seven thousand gallons.
And then they add the fifty dollars on top of that.
Yeah.
A connection fee for, yes.
There's-
Well, it's not a connection fee, it's the right to pump the water.
Go ahead, Toby, if you would.
Mr. Donaldson, if you'd like to come meet with myself or any of our staff, we can talk about your individual water bill, but the general rule is you play a fat, a flat amount per month and then on the basis of your usage. Correct?
Yes, yes.
And new rates were implemented on January first, twenty eighteen, and now that we're into summer, people's higher water use will generate a higher bill. So what I would recommend, and most people, we recommend the same thing, you can sign up for an online portal where you can go on there and see your water usage in real time and know exactly how much water you're using. If you're seeing unusual spikes in your water uses, you can call our water department and we will come do an audit on your property to ensure that you don't have a leak or something else that's generating a higher water use than you otherwise would.
I know, Toby, but mine is, and I go around the neighborhood because I have it, and I ask them how much their water bill is. I want to know. Why mine's fifty bucks? That, that's what I don't understand. And the next-door neighbor is-
We'll take a look at your water bill, Don, and I can call you tomorrow and let you know.
I'm sorry?
I said I can take a look at your water bill and I can call you tomorrow and let you know.
I'll, I'll call Jeremy. Is he on vacation?
Just give me a call, Don.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions on number five? If not, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Move for approval of item five.
Second. I have a first and a second. Can I just have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Dorosset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero, one.
Okay. I see no unfinished business, no public hearing, no new business, no discussion, discussion item. Council member referrals. Is there anybody on the council like to have a referral for, place a future item on the agenda? I see none. Reports. I have nothing to report. Councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Lane?
Nothing, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Dorosset?
Nothing.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, just a reminder, uh, Monday, September third is Labor Day. Our city offices will be closed. Um, also reference, uh, we've mentioned in here that we are working on a municipal code update, which is a comprehensive overhaul to all of our ordinances within the city. We had hoped that we'd be able to get that process started in August. Unfortunately, due to a number of other work considerations, negotiations being one of